Something.
It's a voice in Hawaii.
Hawaii? Oh, you mean virtual Hawaii?
All right, Kathy Pence here. She's on the line, too.
Is she on Zoom or is she on a phone?
She's using Zoom through a phone. So no, uh, no video for Kathy.
So there's no video. Okay. That's why I want to go around without the hand raising for the members. You know what I mean? But, but, but before we get to that question and answer for the, for the board members, you can handle the hand raising for like counselors and stuff.
Sure, sure.
I really appreciate it. Thank you.
And Kathy, if you can hear me, I think you need to hit star six or star nine. So you can speak.
Star six.
There you, star six. There, I see her. Okay.
Got it?
Yeah, Kathy, can you hear everybody and just say?
Yes, I do.
All right, great. You're good to go. And you guys are live streaming on Revere TV and Facebook. So feel free to start the meeting whenever you'd like, Louis.
Thank you very much. Frank, you were gonna make roll call, right? Frank, we discussed. You're gonna have, have the roll call, Frank?
Oh, Frank just got kicked off. He's an attendee now. Hold on.
Ashley, there might also be some audience members that you will need to promote to panelists at some point.
Sure.
Frank, do you want? Frank, you're muted. Frank, do you want?
Okay, here I am.
Okay. Did you want to handle roll call for us?
Yeah, so we have a forum. I think we do. Okay, let me handle my call. Mr. Miko?
Yeah, Frank.
Mr. Charoney?
Yeah.
Mr. Delvecchio? I see him on there. I'm gonna put him as present. Mr. DiSimoni?
Yeah.
Mr. Devoe? Nope.
Here.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
There he is.
Uh, Mr. Giovanni, absent. Mr. Jeremelo?
Here.
Present. Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Penn?
Yeah.
Present. Okay, we have a forum. So, Mr. Chairman, uh, obviously tonight's meeting is a presentation of the Riverfront Master Plan. Before we get into it, uh, I just want to introduce, uh, the consultants and the key members of the Development Advisory Group that made all this happen. So, uh, from Arrow Street Architects, we have David Boys and Amy Corte. David will be making the presentation tonight. Uh, we also have Sean Sanger from Copley Wolf Design Group, uh, John McAllister and Jay Borkland from Lloyd's Register Engineering. City staff, we have Bob O'Brien, Ella Baker, Juu Demaro, Paul Rupp, consultant, Mike Kinehoso, and Nick Malaisen. And elected officials were State Representative Jessica Genino, Patrick Keefe, John Powers, and former State Rep. Rosalie Vincent. We also have a number of community members in the Master Plan Committee consisting of Jay Bolton from the Point of Pines Yacht Club, Elaine Hurley from the Riverside, Loretta Lacentra from the Riverside, Eric Lampadecchio, former Riverside resident, and Robert Mara from Point of Pines, John Chu from the Point of Pines, and Gina Vanderloop from the Point of Pines. So this, this master planning effort, uh, is, as it described in the presentation, in the letter I sent to the Planning Board, consists of about nineteen acres and comprises the area noted as the, uh, North Shore Boat Works on Fair Ave, heading north to Gibson Park and including the G and J towing site and the Mirage Site. And it runs along the riverfront, basically from Fair Ave to the GE Bridge. The funding to put this together was from the Seaport Economic, Seaport One Council and, um, with the help of Paul Rupp, a consultant, we secured funding from that agency. And it was a very, uh, inclusive effort that lasted, I think, about three, four months. And, uh, we covered a lot of ground and you'll see it tonight's, in tonight's presentation. So, uh, before we get started, I would, uh, I would give it to, uh, Bob O'Brien, the Director of Planning and Development, to give a brief overview of the history of this project. And then I will ask, ask you to turn it over. I think State Representative Jessica Genino has to log off this meeting and get on to another meeting. So Bob, Bob, you want to take it from here?
Uh, thank you, Frank. Uh, Bob O'Brien, Chief of Planning and Development for the City of Revere. I'll be very brief in my introduction, um, but it's, it's worthy of note that the city has been involved with this general area, at least in its various pieces for many years. Um, El Baker, for example, recently completed, uh, a new playground at Gibson Park, for example. We've been long involved with the Riverside community on persistent flooding problems, including some recent improvements that were made along Mills Avenue. The issue of the Riverside Boat Works, a long vacant property and its potential redevelopment has been a source of no end of community controversy in which the city was very, um, effectively engaged with the community. And it was clear from the community that, uh, the Riverside community in particular wanted to see more community oriented and civic uses for that property. But a number of things began to happen in recent months and years that began to pull all of this together. One was, um, the introduction to the city of a gentleman who was interested in developing a rowing center, a community rowing center at the Riverside Boat Works. So we began to see some upside potential for that facility. The Commonwealth began planning on transportation improvements along Route 1A and both Lynn and in Revere, but particularly with the replacement of the General Edwards Bridge. We continued to work on the improvement of Gibson Park and worked with DOT on a lot of other transportation improvements. But the biggest single thing that happened recently was the G and J site, which is now, as you know, Tow and Salvage Yard at the northern end of this property, became available for, uh, sale and for development. And perhaps equally importantly, the development entity that was interested in buying and redeveloping that property was Redgate Capital, which has had a long, uh, and successful experience with redevelopment in our community, including such projects as One Beachmont and 500 Ocean, among others. And Redgate was a development entity that the city knew well and, uh, also that knew the city well. And we felt very comfortable with, uh, the plans that were beginning to develop for that neck of the woods. All of these pieces started to fall into place and Paul Rupp understood that there might be the possibility of putting together a master plan for this district as a whole, in which kind of the whole would be greater than the sum of its parts. And, uh, Paul, uh, explored the possibility of funding such a master plan through the Seaport Economic Council. Paul has been invaluable over the years, as you probably all know, in identifying and mobilizing such funding sources. Uh, the mayor was convinced, uh, of the great potential of this effort and in August made a presentation to the Seaport Economic Council chaired by the Lieutenant Governor that was exceptionally well received. And that was a proposal to do a riverfront master plan for the entire district, the public properties and the private properties, the transportation elements, as well as the environmental and recreational elements, especially as they related to the adjacent communities of Riverside and Point of Pines. As a result of, uh, the mayor's very effective presentation, um, they decided to fund the master plan for the Riverfront District. Paul, I think that was probably in mid to late autumn. During that time, while we were anticipating that possibility, we began preparations with DOT and others to begin to discuss some of the elements and especially involving the transportation elements that were going to be critical to unlocking the development potential of this whole area. One of the big problems was the only way to get to the Gibson Park area was through the Riverside community and everybody understood that was not an ideal situation. So in the context of all of these public and private possibilities, uh, the mayor convened with funding from the Seaport Economic Council, a representative development advisory committee that Frank has already alluded to, and commissioned them in November to develop an overview and a vision for the Riverfront District as a whole, if at all possible, uh, by the end of January. The reason that was critically important was not only in terms of development timeframes on the private side, but also funding opportunities for, uh, these kinds of improvements, which we were anticipating on the public side, including the Seaport Economic Council itself. So over the course of about three months' time, four months' time, with the aid of a very, uh, accomplished consultant team that, uh, has already been introduced to you, um, and with the critical input of the community through the Development Advisory Group, I think we have produced, um, a rather remarkable document, which is being presented for your adoption today. And, uh, that will be presented now by, uh, by David and his team and, um, I and Frank and Paul and others, as well as the members of the Development Advisory Group, uh, will not only, uh, weigh in with their comments, but are prepared to answer any of your questions. With that, I would, as Frank suggested, turn it over to Jessica Genino, uh, member of our City Council, but also our newly elected state representative, who has been active in this process from the very beginning. Uh, Jessica does have to get on to another meeting. So Jessica, I'll turn it over to you to, uh, say what you will before you have to, uh, depart. Jessica?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Bob, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your, your leeway this evening. I'm excited to speak as a proponent for this project. It's been a really fantastic project to be a part of. Uh, this team on behalf of the City of Revere has put a lot of time and effort into making sure that this is something that's not only great for the city in the short term, but also the long term. And I think that there was a great collaboration in working with the residents of the Riverside area. Um, you know, Loretta Lacentra has been an important part. She's been on every meeting, um, as well as Wendy and Gina from the Point of Pines and Eric and so many others, to really make sure that this is a collaborative effort between the city and looking at the city's big picture, but also, you know, looking at that neighborhood and keeping in mind what their goals are and what they're looking to do. The flooding was a huge part of this project in talking about how do we make sure that, um, you know, aside from increasing the, the value and the aesthetics of the property for our residents, how do we make sure that, um, it's no more detrimental and if anything helps the flooding situation in that neighborhood, which we all know, uh, is an increasing problem, especially because these hundred-year storms are now happening several times a year. So, um, I'm excited for everyone to see this presentation and to see the work that's brought to it. It's been a pleasure working with, again, the City of Revere team and the developers in, in making this happen. So I hope that you enjoy it as much as I did. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me anytime. And again, thank you so much for the leeway this evening and along the speaker beginning. I do appreciate it. And, um, thank you all for just being here to listen because I really think this is going to be a project that's gonna add a great deal of value to our city and to our residents.
Thank you, Jessica. And Frank, I'll turn it over to you and David.
Okay, David, uh, you're on.
Thank you, Frank. I'm gonna try to share my screen here. This is a very, um, abbreviated, uh, presentation of the entire master plan document. The master plan document, uh, obviously, um, it's the culmination of several months' worth of work, a lot of, uh, meetings, a lot of feedback. And what we have here is just kind of the highlights and really to talk about the major components. We do have the full report, um, with us tonight. So if there are things that we want to delve into a little bit more, we can do that. Um, I think Frank mentioned the, uh, the team overall. This is just a, a quick view of everybody that was involved as part of the, uh, Design Advisory Group. The site itself is the nineteen point four acres and it's, it's a series of different pieces. And this was the, one of the documents that went into the Seaport Economic Council to get this grant. Just quickly going through the pieces, we have the, uh, the, the Boat Works site as A, Gibson Park as, um, site B. The potential sites, PC is the, really the riverwalk element.
David, excuse me, I, I could be having a problem at my end, but, but your, your pages aren't turning on my.
Sorry.
We're showing just the, essentially the cover sheet.
Okay.
I don't think anybody saw the, uh, D A G members, etc.
And it's also in thumbnail view. I think you may want to.
Okay, so I'm gonna stop sharing for a second because I'm not sure why that is actually happening.
Well, David's, uh, fixing that. I, I might just add that, uh, David Boys and Amy of Arrow Street have had a long history in Revere and in fact have been involved with master planning efforts going back to the waterfront square and beyond. And I think that's very much reflected in, in this presentation. Yeah, that's better, David.
Sorry about that. Let me try one more time to see if I can get the full presentation up. Which is not gonna do. Again, so, um, we've gone over this, but. Did it flip?
Yeah, it did.
Um, so this is the site map that we use to, to secure the grant. Um, the different components of the nineteen point, uh, point four acres, um, are all highlighted here and they all have, um, different, uh, aspects that contribute to this plan. The Riverside Boat Works is, uh, parcel is, is identified with the A. Um, the goal there is to, and again, when we started this, we didn't really have a full plan in mind, but the goal was to create waterfront access. B is Gibson Park and really, you can even see in this image, some of the sort of water damage to the site. The goal there was to improve resiliency for the park and for the neighborhood. C is the, the, uh, riverfront access that's critical to connecting the, the neighborhoods. D is the G and J site for the private development, as Bob mentioned, a key component of moving this forward. E is the potential pier site. F, uh, the Point of Pines Yacht Club. And G is the piece of North Shore Road of Route 1A that has, right now, some fairly large off-ramps.
That's also the site, David. It's worth noting of the new fire station.
Correct. Um, existing conditions on the site, I think, um, everybody sort of knows what these are and, you know, there are obviously some, you know, unsightly buildings and, and kind of debris components, but additionally, there are some, uh, environmental conditions at the shoreline that aren't great. So a lot of what we looked at here is, um, how do we use some of the assets? The Riverside Boat Work, for instance, it's not in great shape right now, but does it have the potential to be something else? And where do we need to really make, uh, significant improvements? Early on in the process, um, you know, I think that we heard very clearly from the residents that, uh, flooding is an issue and it's not just coastal flooding because coastal flooding, um, is a kind of a significant issue, but it's really beyond this, the nineteen point four acre site. Um, it's something that was being studied as part of the municipal vulnerability plan that El Baker and the city are, are pushing forward on right now. Our team coordinated with that team and kind of thought holistically about how we would approach things. But on top of the, of the coastal flooding, there's also kind of regular kind of storm, rainstorms and other flooding and that, um, you know, we worked with Lloyd's Register to look at concepts about how we could make improvements to the site. So one of the things that we realized early or later in the, in the process, after, you know, working with the city, working with the team on the MVP and, and listening to the neighbors is that existing storm drain system has a kind of a fatal flaw that when it's high tide, it can't, it can't, uh, release itself to the, to, to the river. So part of one of the major components that we talked about were using Gibson Park as a stormwater storage component. And we can talk about, a little bit more about that, but just some images of what that might look like and how that might connect. Holistically, we looked at all these sites. The small image in the upper left is really just kind of watershed areas. It's how the air, the different areas of the site currently drain. And, you know, it was discussed multiple times that changes to this area couldn't and shouldn't have any negative impacts. And what you're looking at in the plan are all the resiliency measures that are built into, um, the stormwater and, and, um, flooding issues. So we have things like rain gardens here. We have salt marshes that help, uh, the shoreline, um, porous pavement to help, you know, with surface runoff. Uh, and then the big, uh, blue area is really that subsurface, um, storage area that has a pretty significant potential to, to pick up stormwater from the, the Riverside neighborhood. So much of the report is really dedicated to strategies for resiliency and stormwater management because it was such an important component in the discussions. All those things are great, but, you know, another big part of this, of this effort is to create a place, to create, uh, you know, better access, better utilization of what is a pretty great resource. So what you're looking at here is, uh, an overview of the, of the final master plan and then also some of the potential uses. Um, you've got, obviously, the, from the lower left, um, clockwise, you've got the Boat Works, uh, the multi-use field, which was really important to the city, Parks and Rec. We, we looked at multiple sizes to try to figure out the best utilization. Private or passive walkways around the, uh, around the water's edge that continue throughout the whole site and kind of loop back to create a network. Uh, the private development, and we have a picture of, uh, 500 Ocean here, which just sort of identifies, you know, how private development can actually create public amenity and, and connect to the public as opposed to being more private and important aspect. And, and then there's the pier, um, the idea of reutilizing the pier, uh, as a, as a fishing pier. One of the things that we was realized pretty early in the process is that the, the improvements to the park are gonna generate additional trips to the park. Right now, all those trips have to go through the Riverside neighborhood and that seemed like an undue burden on that neighborhood. So you can see in the middle, the, uh, in the upper image, the, I had to do much tighter ramp, a ramping system, provide, um, connection from the northbound and southbound to Gibson Park to be able to eliminate the traffic patterns from the Riverside neighborhood. Uh, what you also see is a large green patch that gets kind of created out of what is kind of infield of, uh, on ramps. That area is area that can be, uh, added to parkland. It can, and we've got a plan to add parking and, um, amenity space, basketball court. This is the overall plan with the, um, the components. And, and these components are components that have been developed through feedback at this point. Um, honestly, this is a pretty ambitious plan and it will take some time to develop. So one of the nice things about a master plan and, you know, preliminary plans like this is they're, they have, uh, built-in flexibility. So, um, working with Parks and Rec, if the tennis courts, uh, find their way to the high school. Right now, the tennis team and the golf team practice, the high school golf, golf team practice here and they have their meets here. So any of their events are, are for tennis are held here. If that actually gets shifted to the new high school, there's additional parkland that could be opened up to something else. Maybe there are two tennis courts because the need is still there. Maybe there's something else. Uh, but this is a preliminary roadmap for what could happen, uh, throughout. And you see, um, you see the boathouse and, well, with, uh, a dot, we did study, um, different approaches there and ultimately came up with the concept of really very small craft. It's, you know, it would be hand launched. Uh, we looked at putting in a boat launch and, uh, the, again, the impact on the neighborhood, what it needed for space and, and the fact that it's fairly shallow here, uh, a good amount of the time. Ultimately, this idea of a rowing center or a kayak launch made a lot more sense. You also see the, uh, uh, idea of the private development. And what's really important is that the private development really shares that pub, that, that waterfront edge with the public. And, you know, that is not a condition that exists today. Right now, Gibson Park looks back on itself out by the point. The point out there is, you know, west facing, it has really amazing sunsets and, and views of this, long views of the river and, and the city. It's a really nice place to be. Right now, it's kind of filled with, uh, junk cars and, um, salvage materials. So it's, and the same as the, you know, the area in the front, um, you can see a landscaped parking area, uh, stretching into what is the Mirage Site. The hope there is that overall this area develops, that area, Mirage becomes a public restaurant, you know, really great location, something that you can't easily, uh, recreate right now with some of the, uh, permitting restrictions in place. And then, and item T is the fishing pier. The fishing pier, the pier exists in that location. It is not in great shape and through the course of the, of the master plan, Redgate has started a process of, um, engineering evaluation of that pier and, and have been talking with the city of gifting that back to the city. So same idea, just kind of a three-dimensional, uh, you know, vision of what this could be. And then, uh, we did work through, uh, through many discussions, trying to figure out different, uh, components. This isn't necessarily, you know, in the timeline approach. It's really trying to break things down into different pieces that could be built together, could be funded together and kind of make sense together. So, um, the Riverside Boat Works is really its own component. The, the roadway access improvements, um, are their own component as well and really something that should happen early, uh, before a lot of the planning or a lot of the improvements to the parkland. Uh, Gibson Park improvements, um, are pretty extensive and probably broken, would be broken up into multiple pieces. But some of those pieces net, you know, naturally go together, the underground storage and the, the multi-purpose, uh, multi-use field, obviously. So if you're gonna build all that underground storage, you would finish it off with the final field on top of it. The D is the continuous shoreline access and, and, and general shoreline improvements. D is the continuous shoreline access and, and, and general shoreline improvements. That's something that really would be permitted, you know, at, at one or two, in one or two pieces and, you know, ultimately could get funding to happen together. And then finally, the public pier, again, one of those things that has probably a little bit longer lead time because of all the environmental permitting. So that's really a high, you know, high level overview of the document. Again, the document is pretty extensive and goes into a lot more detail at least than, than I think we have time for here tonight.
David, I would just add one word to your presentation and that is gateway. As the mayor made clear, the value of this plan is not only transforming the district, which is a worthy goal in and of itself, but also creating a more appropriate and attractive northern gateway to the city of Revere from the North Shore as a whole. And I think this will certainly accomplish that goal, especially when compared to the existing situation, which is rather unattractive and unsightable. So gateway and transformation, I think are the two words that describe this.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that wraps up the presentation. As you can see, one of the key components of this plan is to activate the shoreline. It's been neglected in that area for years. In fact, most of that shoreline is unusable. And as you can see, this will tie it, wrap it around from the Pines River to the Saugus River and across to the development site and back to the neighborhood. So it's an important feature of the plan as well as the transportation improvements, park improvements, resiliency improvements and potential development improvements. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman. The meeting is yours.
Thank you, Frank. Frank, Ashley, Ashley, are there any public officials who wish to speak? Do you see their hands up or anything? Are there any public officials who wish to ask any questions or speak on behalf of the project as Jessica did? Are there any, are there any people who?
Mr. Chairman, this is Nick Malaysian, the chairman from the Conservation Commission. How are you, sir?
Good, thank you, Nick. You have the floor.
Sure. I just want to, you know, I was part of these, this advisory group and this project is something that's, I'm very much far. Right now, there's no, there's nothing down there for flooding right now. There's no storage capacity, no nothing for the flooding to go, nothing to go anywhere. And having that underwater, underground storage for water is going to be a, of great value down there in the Riverside community to help with the flooding that happens down there. So I'm very much in favor of this project and I hope the planning board will be as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I see Council President Anthony Zambudo's hand raised.
My good friend Anthony Zambudo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, I was not involved heavily in this master plan, but I am certainly a supporter of the concept. It's, it's been a long time coming and it's certainly needed. And so I just, just wanted to come and speak as a proponent for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Frank, just, for the board members, we're going to go around and ask questions after everybody else is finished and we're going to go one at a time. So you're all going to get your chance, but we're going to be speaking, we're going to be asking questions and speaking last, if that's okay for the board members. I know some of you are on, are on telephone, so you're not on video. So we're going to go one at a time, just as we did in the previous public hearing. Are there any other public officials or appointed officials who would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I assume appointed officials include appointed members of the development advisory?
Yes, anyone else other than board members. Julie, I see a hand up.
You're muted.
Oh, I just wanted to say we have Bob Mara and John Chu, who both have their hand raised. I don't know if you can see that. That's why I just flagged you down to let you know that they have their hand raised.
Bob Mara, please, you have the floor. Bob?
I, I, I think I'm unmuted at this point. Is that right?
You are.
There you go.
Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board, I, I, I want to say this simply because I, I think it needs to be said from a voice of people who simply live in the neighborhood. Everything that has been presented so far tonight gives you a full description and a valuable description of what this project entails. But I see it as a, as a resident of the neighborhood, not only as an adventurous project, but it, it's an important project. It, it invigorates a piece of land in our city that is just grossly underutilized. There's a, there's a dysfunctional waterfront there and uninspiring, out of the way ball field, a small playground. It, it's a, it's a holding lot for towed and abandoned vehicles, which is almost unimaginable that a city would have a tow lot. It really, it, it located at what is the front door of two of the most attractive neighborhoods in the city, the Riverside and the Point of Pines. So this project really changes the face of the city, especially when you're coming in from the north. But beyond that, it addresses problems in the neighborhood. And that's really where this project is an important project in addition to all of its aesthetic value. It addresses flooding. It addresses traffic. It addresses access to the park. It provides wonderful recreational and passive space utilizing that waterfront to the full benefit of the public. So it becomes a scenic area as well. It considers future growth in that area. It connects the pines and the Riverside, which now exist as if they're two separate entities altogether, when really they should be combined as, almost as one. And above all else, it's, it's imagined by a, by a developer that has kind of proven his stripes here in the city. The projects that, that have been undertaken in Revere by Red Gate prove to be, have proven to be really high-quality projects. So this is something that is, that is really, I, I know there's a lot of excitement about Suffolk Downs and all that's going to go on down there, but in very many ways, this project being where it is and what has been there for so many years, this project is even more transformative than the Suffolk Downs project. So I hope that the planning board will endorse it enthusiastically and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. I, I always enjoy your vocabulary whenever I hear you speak.
I don't know what I said that was so good.
No, no, I just enjoy your vocabulary. Julie, who's next?
The gentleman, John Chu, who was actually a member of our advisory planning group. He's listed in the attendees group.
Yeah. Mr. Chu, you have the floor, sir.
Ashley, perhaps you could promote John to a panelist.
Actually, he has been, he's going to.
He should be coming through. I already promoted him.
All right. Can you guys hear me? Yes. All right. I'm, I'm John Chu, resident of Point of Pines. I live next door to Bob. I don't know my words will be as well received, but I just wanted to say out loud that I strongly support this project. I've worked on a lot of projects in my career and you don't find many like this one that just address so many different things, you know, and the, the future impact of this project and how it dovetails with other things that are going to be going on as a result. And for all the other things that have already been said, I fully support this.
Thank you, John. Is there any, I'm sure that my ward councilor, Patrick Keef, would like to say a few words. Patrick, you want to speak at all?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've been watching this unfold for some time. I obviously had a few comments early on, but yeah, you know, the process has been tremendous. And yes, Bob's vocabulary is very nice. That represents, represents the city really well. But you know, we, we, there's been a lot of transparency. I don't live in the neighborhood, but I've been talking about, since I've been in Revere 17 years, the waterfront needs to be activated from the front side, which is the beach side and then the backside, which is what I think should be the recreational side, more of the, the boating recreation, kayaking and using that riverside. So I love the activation of that site and the setting of the, the fields are wonderful. Obviously, it's going to, you know, come down to, you know, down the road, the neighborhood really embracing the, the new neighborhood because it is. It's a dilapidated boatyard and a tow, a tow yard right now. So you would think that it's only, only positive, but you know, there's always little things that have to be mitigated. And so far, it looks like the process has been very, very, very handled very well.
Thank you very much, Patrick.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you have Al Baker, the city's open space and resiliency planner.
Al Baker?
Hello, Chair.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo the residents of the Point of Pines comments previously and by saying that this plan really was very thorough with community participation, which was a really great chance for everybody in the neighborhood to participate either as a panelist or as an attendee in the series of meetings that we've had. And it did do a fantastic job, as, as has been mentioned, to address resiliency, traffic and recreation, which are three, three pretty continued factors for this project. The development really is an anchor that will bring all this to life. And as a resident of the Pines, every time you come over the General Edwards Bridge and you see the G and J tow site, I think this will really be a breath of fresh air for, for many of us that live here and for the rest of the residents in the community. So I just want to speak as a proponent of this master plan project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know how to handle the folks that I can't see a picture of. I know this. Go ahead, Julie. Julie, unmute yourself, please.
Sorry about that. I was just trying, I was just trying to see who else had their hand raised, but it was actually Al and so she's already spoken.
And, and what about the folks like Elizabeth Fallow and Jay Borkland who don't have, who are not visible, not visible?
Let's see, Jay?
Let's start with Jay. Jay, would you like to speak?
Well, I'm part of the consultant team. Thank you, working at LR with John McAllister. So I'll answer questions if they come up.
Okay, thank you. Same thing with Elizabeth? Elizabeth?
I am. Yeah, sorry, unmuted. No, I don't have any comments.
Okay. And then I think we're, and Michael Henhozo? You all set?
I don't mind saying a few words, but I'm a huge proponent of this project from a recreational standpoint. You know, as, as we're pushing towards 6,000, 60,000 people in the city, having some recreational space and green space and especially what this project looks like, to have access to water, have access to a turf field, basketball courts, tennis courts. It's really just an amazing, to watch it transform from what it is to what it can be and how badly the city needs recreational space. Thank you for everybody's hard work putting this together. But on behalf of Parks and Recreation, we're, we're excited to have a project like this.
Thank you, Michael. Paul Rapp, would you like to say a few words, Paul? Unmute yourself, please.
Okay, all right. Yeah, just, this has been a great process and the end result is spectacular, I believe. Once the planning board adopts the master plan, as the city's master plan for the area will begin to go after funding of various components. And we have begun that process already in anticipation of your adoption of this. So it, it marks a new day. It marks a new beginning. It marks a new chapter.
I'm a Zoom crowd.
Paul, continue.
That's it. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bob O'Brien again.
Yes, sir.
I know that Loretta Lacentra is a member of the audience and Loretta is uncharacteristically silent tonight, but I just want to pay tribute to her and Elaine Hurley from the Riverside community. This plan is very much the realization of a vision that they've been arguing for, for many years. And they've been both very important parts of the DAG, but long before that have had in mind what we are now envisioning and making happen. And I just want to thank them publicly.
Bob, are they one of these phone numbers up here on my board?
I think Loretta is a member of the audience. I won't drag her.
Loretta, would you like to speak? Loretta? Okay.
Louis, I just promoted her as a panelist if she, if she wanted to, if she's going to be able to now.
Loretta, you have the floor if you'd like to say a few words.
I'll have to unmute.
Loretta?
Oh, come on.
Is there any, so is there, is there anyone else that would like to speak before the, before the, the board starts asking their questions? Okay. Could everyone, could anyone who's not speaking, please mute themselves? And then we'll start with, and then we'll start with the board members. We're going to do one at a time. So we'll start with Kathy Penn. Kathy?
I'm here, is there? Do you hear me?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Being on the elderly side, I would like to know how long this project is expected to take or when it's expected to start. My usual questions.
Thank you, Kathy. Who wants to take that question from David or any of you folks?
Well, I'd be glad to take a crack at it.
Bob, go ahead.
I mean, I think we have got to start early on, as has been suggested, with the transportation improvements, which are the foundation of everything else that's going on here. So that will begin to happen relatively soon. There's obviously some funding and permitting that we have to deal with to get that underway, but that will happen soon. The Riverside Boat Works likewise, in order to realize the vision we're outlined in this plan, has to be purchased by the city. We're in the process of negotiating that process now. And I would think that once the property is purchased by the city, its renovation will begin quite shortly thereafter. So we're talking about, on those two fronts, you'll probably see some activity within the next, I'd say, six months to a year. It will take a lot of planning and permitting to get that done, but that's going to happen relatively quickly. The development likewise will move forward with its permitting process. It will require an overlay zoning district and then all of the permitting at both the state and local level. That, as usual, with all the architectural work that needs to be done, will take some months. It will probably be a year or two before, well, probably by the end of the year, you'll probably see some construction beginning. So elements of this are going to start early on. In the meantime, we'll be seeking funding for other elements, particularly on the recreational side, but it will happen in both my and your lifetime. I can pretty well guarantee.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Kathy. Anthony Del Vecchio, would you like to ask any questions, sir?
Well, I'm good.
Okay. Juan Jamelo? Mr. Secretary, would you like to ask any questions? Unmute yourself, please. Juan? Juan, we'll come back to you. Jim O'Brien?
Sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. I'm here.
Okay, Juan, why don't you, if you have any questions you'd like to ask?
Yeah. So, you know, I, I'd like to ask, I don't know if this got talked about during the planning process, but I'd like to know a little bit more about the type of labor that we're bringing in in terms of prevailing wage. but I'd like to know a little bit more about the type of labor that we're bringing in in terms of prevailing wages, minimum procurement standards for this particular project. I'd like to see a project that honors the working people of of Revere, that that sets good living wages for them and and brings some good healthcare. This sounds like an amazing project, and I think that we have the the workers here in the city that that would be more than ecstatic to 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 work on this project. But we have to stay committed to ensuring that they can continue to live here, and that means giving them the benefits that they deserve. So I don't know if this was talked about in the planning process at all, but if it hasn't, I'd love to hear more from from the proponents on how they're going to ensure that our residents and the workers that are coming in are going to be taken care of.
Mr. O'Brien, would you like to take that or pass it on to who can answer that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say just two things. All of the public work that will be done in this in implementation of this master plan will all be done pursuant to all of the public bidding laws and prevailing wages that are required. And we've had a very good history with Redgate in all of the projects that they've done in terms of the the quality of their work, the level of their compensation and so on. I don't know whether we have anybody from Redgate on that wants to add to that, but that is an issue we get into in the site plan review process, which has not yet commenced. But it certainly will be on the list of considerations.
Bob, this is Damian. Hi, everyone. Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I mean, it's obviously very early, but we are committed. Redgate's had a long history of working with Local 103. So not just prevailing wage, but 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 union subcontractors on basically all of our Revere projects. Local 7 also has been active on all of our projects. So we try to do our best to try to balance out, you know, labor as well as project feasibility. It's an important aspect to us, and we stay committed to that.
Thank you.
Bob, if I could follow up, but thank you for asking that question, Juan. I really like to see, and I and I think Redgate's kind of committed to this in their past work in and around the city of Revere, is that people from Revere and the surrounding communities like Winthrop and Landon, our budding communities, would see work at the at the site. A lot of times, and it wasn't this administration, but it was previous administrations, more often than not, I would drive past a work site and see Vermont and New Hampshire license plates when I knew there was Revere people willing to work. But that's just to follow up on what Juan was saying. And I it's just that we would like to see that happen. Some stuff, you know, there are a lot of local people that are that are willing and able to work on on sites like this.
Mr. Chairman, I would just say, I live in the middle of a lot of these waterfront development projects, and I can assure you, I don't see any out of state license plates.
Not anymore. I I I wanted I wanted to commend the current administration because it's it's been it's been there's been quite a change.
And and that's a commendation of Redgate as well, Damian. I don't know whether there's anything you want to add on that point, but.
Yeah, I mean, you know, some municipalities such as Boston actually have kind of local residency requirements. So, you know, they ask the developer and then also the contractor to use best efforts in order to try to hire locally. We're happy to, although it's not a requirement, you know, per zoning in Revere, we're happy to try to create a program where we do that, and we can address that with Frank, you know, during the site review, site review process, you know, once we get there. But we're committed to it. If we can help our subs find local people, we're very much for that.
I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for that question, Juan.
I appreciate that. Yep, thank you for that. And as that develops, if you could just keep us posted, I'd really appreciate that as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your indulgence.
Thank you, Juan. Sal Amico, member Sal Amico, Vice Chairman, could you you have the floor if you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions, but clearly this is a worthy plan and love to see this go forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Mr. Jim O'Brien, member Jim O'Brien, you have the floor.
First of all, I'd like to say this is a phenomenal undertaking and it's really going to benefit the citizens of Revere. But I do have some concerns on parking. I believe at one of the prior meetings for the riverfront development, Redgate said that they were not charging for parking in the buildings. But yet they said that they were refunding money for the people who didn't take the parking. Is that not the same thing? I mean, I don't know, tell me if I'm wrong, but to me, it seems almost the same thing. And I'd also, one other thing, I just was wondering whether or not the parking, the 95 parking spaces are going to be residential parking or it's going to be parking for the general public.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I can answer that. Yeah, the parking we show, that's public parking for all the public amenities used by the residents of the city. Site Plan Review Committee will require Redgate to have a development agreement that indicates that included in all the leases will be the parking. And there will be no additional parking fees outside.
I would just add to that, Mr. O'Brien, that there is actually a significant difference between those two things because the original problem, as you may remember, was created by people at the Vanguard, which was the first building built in Waterfront Square, who owned vehicles and did not pay to park and park them on Ocean Avenue and elsewhere in the city. That will not be allowed under the arrangement that you suggested is in place for 500 Ocean and other locations. Anybody with a vehicle cannot escape the parking charge. If they don't have a vehicle, they will not have to pay it. But it you cannot, under that circumstance, recreate what happened at Vanguard, and that is what we were trying to prevent. They also do not have any on-street parking stickers issued to them. So all of the parking for the project needs to be accommodated on-site. And in both respects, it's different than, you know, not including parking in the rent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Bob and Jim. Ed DeVoe, would you would you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. Thank you, Louis. And and you're doing a great job as chairman in your first full meeting here, yeah? I I just want to echo a couple of things that have been said already. Number one, the whole collaboration with the neighborhood. In my mind, it's probably the second major project within the city where there's been this this huge collaboration with the neighborhood. And that's that's fantastic. There's nothing better than having people in the neighborhood involved in designing and planning for what's going in their neighborhood. So I think that's a great idea. The the second thing is, is to go back to what Bob Mara said earlier about the the image to the city. I've always driven over that bridge from from Lynn going, oh, someday, maybe we'll have something really that we could look forward to when we come over that bridge. And it's great to see that. I might take issue with you, Bob, about it being more transformative than Suffolk Downs, but that's a little neighborhood rivalry thing. But but and and more importantly, you know, I just think, you know, from it's it's going to be a great thing for the city. But I have two questions. One, that I didn't hear, I think, earlier on, and maybe I missed it. When you were talking about the storage for the water, I didn't hear that that you were trying to raise the revement or the walls along the riverside to prevent the water from coming in onto the streets and into the properties there. And maybe you can clarify that for me. That's one thing. Number two, I wanted to understand a little bit more about the residential units that are being built. How many, what their height is, that sort of thing. I think the traffic and the parking thing has already been answered. And then the last question that I had really was, and it has nothing to do with this project and certainly won't have any any bearing on my project, but when are we going to get a really true broke boat ramp somewhere within this city that everybody can use?
Perhaps I could I could begin to answer some of those questions. And I think Jay and John might be able to supplement on some of the details of the resiliency. Number one, with regard to the boat ramp, Ed, we tried to find a boat ramp location throughout this area. The problem is, on the Pines River, it's a very it's a very silted area that doesn't accommodate anything but the shallowest draft vehicles, which is why we're talking about rowing and shelling and that sort of thing there. We looked also with the cooperation, full cooperation of the Point of Pines Yacht Club at the possibility of doing one there. And the problem there was similar, but it's also complicated by the parking requirements for a boatyard. I mean, a boat ramp, which are not only the people that come, but the trailers that they bring, et cetera, et cetera. So we tried our damnedest because it was the highest priority for a number of people, and it just wasn't possible here. We will continue to look elsewhere, but.
Yeah, and and just to on that point, I bring it up only by saying, I just don't want to let that fall through the cracks in other areas of the city. And I understand there were problems with doing it there, but somehow, some way, we've got to get one somewhere in this city. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
Understood. With regard to the the unit count and mix for the development project, it was described in some generalities in the master plan, which really didn't address it in the kind of level of detail, which will be addressed primarily through the site plan review process. But in the meantime, to a greater extent, also in the zoning overlay district. Generally speaking, we're talking about a project that will be probably in the range of 250 to less than 300 units. It's smaller, for example, and far less dense than 500 Ocean, for example. But the the actual details are currently being worked out now in consultation with the community, with Board Counselor and others. We don't have that precise level of detail, but that's the general order of of magnitude. With regard to the resiliency planning, in particular, how the underwater storage facilities beneath the new multi-use field at Gibson Park will work, perhaps Jay or John could comment a little bit on that and the relative merits of seawalls versus natural flood control mechanisms.
Okay, yeah. Thank you very much, Bob. I'm John McAllister, be happy to take that if you guys, if everyone can hear me. Respect to the seawall and the revement wall, that's really dealing with the storm surge. As David alluded to at the beginning, it's kind of two types of flooding that we're trying to to fight, fight against or prevent. We're resilient for. So the the storm surge flooding, that is a factor, not only what happens in northeastern now, but we have the rising sea levels that we have to deal with, where it's going to be becoming more worse, you know, just high tide flooding twice a day. We can see in 30 years, this parts of these this study area is going to be underwater twice a day. So that we decided not to do because the MVP program, the Municipal Vulnerability Program that's going on right now, that El Baker's working on with AECOM, they're really focused on that for the whole the whole peninsula part. And you really want to have a more, rather than just protecting our 19 acres, we want to, because water is going to find its way around anyways. We wanted to have a more prescriptive, larger scale plan. So we coordinate with them, we give them our input, our ideas and what things would work, where we can tighten some elevations. But just to do something for the 19.4 acres, it wouldn't be the benefits wouldn't justify the costs, you know, it wouldn't be something. So what we're doing is some landscape sculpting. We're going to target areas to allow it where it can go or where we can allow some water in, protect more higher value areas as well. So it's it's a we call it landscape sculpting, where it's just you're protecting areas with softer rather than revement walls with natural vegetation, living shorelines. Even the salt marshes can do a lot for the for the storm surge. And then for the subsurface storage, that's really for the for the rainfall that's falling, especially during a high tide, when the the outfalls are blocked up because they don't have a place to discharge. So what we're providing is so it doesn't back up and flood the neighborhood like it's doing now. We're going to have to put in a pump station, but we're going to provide a huge amount of subsurface storage to allow it to go over there, get out of the way, and then as the tide starts dropping, then it can start discharging in this natural course into the Pines River. So.
There will be some restoration of the deteriorated seawall in the vicinity of the Riverside Boat Works, for example. You may know that that has completely deteriorated, and that will be renewed. But there will not be a major barrier around the whole park.
So and and I understand, you know, the focus of the 19.4 acres, and and you're going to somewhat harden that area or soften that area to be able to get retaining water. However, and I'm just trying to make sure I understand and clarify the fact that when we have highly sea levels, we're going to have water washing over what the current levels of protection are and that the storage is going to be, but they're still going to have flooding in that area. And and going back to the flooding with your the apartment buildings that you're building, those are also going to still be flooded as well?
No, actually, they won't, Ed, because those are actually on the highest part of the site, and they will be built to avoid that kind of thing, just as Suffolk Downs was designed. And I might say, as was alluded to earlier, the MVP is taking a larger and even more regional look at this, including consideration of things like sea gates and so forth, that will have the kind of effect for the area as a whole that this site alone can't provide.
So just in terms of understanding, what we're doing is is building resiliency to somewhat protect the 19.4 acres. But there is still other work that is on the city that's doing that's working to protect the rest of the riverside area. Is that correct?
That is correct. And and much of the work that we're doing should have an ameliorating effect on the routine flooding in riverside as well. It's not just to protect the riverfront, but it will have beneficial effects for the riverside community, which, as you know, floods in every rainstorm of any consequence.
Right. Okay, all right. The that that pretty much covers the questions I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. The last, the next questioner is John Di Simone. Do you have any questions? John?
Mr. Chairman, I'm fine.
Thank you very much, John. And the chair just Juan Jamelo kind of touched on on the questions that I had, the concerns I had about the about the about the construction jobs and the jobs on-site. And those questions were answered. But on a whole, this is certainly a project that that deserves support because of the improvement in the area, as far as I'm concerned as a board member. And I certainly am supportive of the overall project. And I sat in on one meeting. I should say that Gene McKenna, who sat in on most meetings, our former chairman, who was, once again, did a great job on representing the board during those meetings. So we appreciate all his efforts, once again. Frank, what's the next step in the meeting?
Well, the next step is we need a motion to adopt the Riverside Master Plan as a guide to future public and private improvements along the riverfront district.
I'll make that motion, Frank.
Motion by Mrs. Penn?
I'll second it.
Mr. O'Brien's the second. Without objection. Do we need a roll call, Frank? Do you want a roll call?
Yes, we would require a roll call.
Okay.
On the motion, by Mrs. Penn, seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Charloni?
Yes.
Mr. Del Vecchio? Del Vecchio? He is present. We'll come back to him.
Yes.
There he is. Mr. Di Simone?
Yes.
Mr. DeVoe?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni is absent. Mr. Geramello?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Penn?
Positively, yes.
All right, voted and so ordered. Mr. Chairman, one more bit of housekeeping. We need approval of previous meeting minutes. Everybody want to make that motion?
I make a motion. Do we approve the minutes?
Motion by John Di Simone.
Seconded it.
All favor.
Seconds by Ed DeVoe.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any dissent? Motion carries unanimously. Frank?
So, Mr. Chairman, the next step in this process, there will be a public hearing, and you'll be getting a notice. The City Council will hold a public hearing on the 22nd of February, the planning board on the 25th of February. And that will be the Riverfront Overlay District, which is a zoning overlay district just encompassing the G and J site and the site of the former Marai, the Marai site, former Jacob's ladder. So that's that site will be, which is owned right now, partially general business and partially limited industrial, will come under a new overlay zone called the Riverfront Overlay District. will come under a new overlay zone called the Riverfront Overlay District. And that will... That new district will frame future development in that area in terms of scale and density. And that document will be sent to you very shortly when I send out the notice for the public hearing. We'll be looking forward to the public hearing on that and a discussion on that and future approval by the planning board and favorable recommendation to the City Council on the overlay district.
Thank you, Frank. David Boyce, there's a famous attorney with that same last name. Are you reading it?
No, it's a different spelling, different line of work, too.
Yeah, well, I've been looking at that name. What does he have, an E at the end?
I think he has an E before the S.
Okay, okay, thank you, David. That's it, Frank, for me.
That's it?
That's it for me. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Or can we entertain a motion to adjourn now?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Well, let Frank tell me it's time to leave.
Oh, okay.
Frank, is it time? Can I?
That's it. No more business.
Ed DeVoe, motion to adjourn, a second.
I can motion to adjourn.
Without objection.
Cigars.
We adjourn to the next meeting. Thank you very much for everyone's participation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.